Twenty regular board meeting of the North Lamar Board of Trustees to order showing all board members present, it has been posted as required by law. We'll move to item two, invocation and pledge of allegiance led by Mr. Holmes.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we just want to thank you for this day, Lord. We just can't thank you enough for all the many blessings you've bestowed upon each and every one of us in this school district. Lord, we invite you here in this school district anytime to walk the halls and be with these kids, these faculty members, Lord, and just be with them and their families and keep them safe. Lord, we just ask you to be with us tonight as we conduct this here in this district, Lord, that everything that we do will be pleasing to you. Lord, we ask you to watch over us with this COVID-19 and all the decisions we make. We're trying to reenter our school system, Lord, will be the safety foremost of our students, our faculty, and our district, Lord. Lord, we ask you to be with our military men and women who are fighting for our freedom that we take for granted so many times and be with all of our first responders in this crazy world, Lord, just be with us in everything that we do. In these things we ask in Christ Jesus' name, amen.
Pledge allegiance.
United States of America, in the true republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, everlasting, eternal. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, indivisible, infinite.
Okay, item three, public testimony. No one signed up for public testimony, so we'll move to item four, consent agenda. If no one has a request to pull an item, we'll need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I saw a move.
Made by Sheila and seconded by Bo. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero. Item five, action and discussion items. Five A, discussion only, 2020, 2021, board meeting dates. Lana?
As you can see in the board packet I just placed, it's the second Monday of every month except for October, and it's the third Monday because the second Monday is a holiday. And then beside it is the campus that'll be doing the pledge, and if they've got any students they want to recognize, they'll do that that month as well.
Will still be conducted in here at the boardroom?
Yes, sir.
Is anyone having questions about the dates? Any comments? Not, we'll move on to item five B, discussion only maintenance report. Mr. Landis?
We'll start with a little video. Yeah, disinfectant machines that we purchased. It's as long as up to a little bit of video parts. I'll kind of tell you a little bit about that.
Where sanitation is vital. Traditional methods of cleaning and sanitizing these workplaces and environments was not as effective as it could be. That's why we started Victory Innovations to create a new method of chemical application. We started by developing the first professional cordless handheld electrostatic sprayer, which revolutionized the way large-scale sanitation jobs were handled. Our handheld design allows for hours of spraying time without the inconvenience of dragging a cord. We designed it to cover more surfaces, to spray less liquid, and to save time and labor, which means our sprayer will save you money while outperforming traditional means of sanitizing. After the success of our handheld sprayer, we realized the next step would be to develop a solution for end-size jobs that would be fast without sacrificing performance. Leveraging our patented and proven technology, we developed the Victory Innovation Backpack Electri Static Sprayer. On a single tank of fluid, a professional can cover up to 8,000 square feet with our cordless. At Victory Innovations, regardless of the size of the job, we have your sanitation solution.
I'm sorry about the product.
Sorry, we can replay it.
Y'all want to replay it? Please do, Rick. Sorry about that.
Yeah, sorry.
Hello, my name is Michael McFarlane, just in here. Does it happen to be talking to you about?
Where sanitation is vital, traditional methods of cleaning and sanitizing these workplaces and environments was not as effective as it could be. That's why we started Victory Innovations to create a new method of chemical application. We started by developing the first professional cordless handheld electrostatic sprayer, which revolutionized the way large-scale sanitation jobs were handled. Our handheld design allows for hours of spraying time without the inconvenience of dragging a cord. We designed it to cover more surfaces, to spray less liquid, and to save time and labor, which means our sprayer will save you money while outperforming traditional means of sanitizing. After the success of our handheld sprayer, we realized the next step would be to develop a solution for end-size jobs that would be fast without sacrificing performance. Leveraging our patented and proven technology, we developed the Victory Innovation Backpack Electri Static Sprayer. On a single tank of fluid, a professional can cover up to 8,000 square feet with our cordless backpack model. At Victory Innovations, regardless of the size of the job, we have your sanitation solution.
Okay, we decided to go with the backpacks because our janitors are going to have to do this disinfectant, and it's a lot easier and quicker for them to build the backpack. Plus, it holds a 2.5 gallons. Now, 8,000 square feet, if you divide that up, will cover about 15 classrooms. We also bought one for every campus, and then we have one for the buses because we're going to have to disinfect the buses every day. It's a lot to do. The high school's one of our biggest campuses, but the way we're going to set the scheduling up, everything will get hit as much as possible. We spent around $12,000 on the backpacks and around $1,200 on the chemicals. That's the cover, and that's just one round. You know, when you say 8,000, 8,000 square feet, 15 rooms, I mean, they're not that big. You can do one hallway and go back and do another hallway, and then over and over and over, so it's not that big a deal. We did go with handheld because we felt like we'd have to have so many, and the backpacks would work a little better for our district and the way we're set up. The product's going to be easy to get. We have some where it's here, it's ready to go. We've also purchased some hand sanitizing stations that we're going to mount in different places in the campuses that we're going to get with the principals because Mr. Stewart felt like that they needed to be monitored because of the kids, you know, they're going to be automatic. So that stuff is here, ready to go. There's other brands of equipment out there. Y'all probably heard of Clorox machines, stuff like that. They're set up on the same basis. This was more affordable than Clorox machines. They run around $3,900 a piece, where these were 17 a piece. And then we have the COVID-19. I guess we'll cover most of that cost. Mr. Stewart's got some more information, but we've got a plan. We're going to set an appointment Sunday, kids come back, we'll be ready. On the buses, we got to put some hand sanitation and cleaner on the buses. We couldn't use the automatic dispensers, so we ordered some plastic brackets, and they'll still have the button that puts that are coming up on the bus. Any questions about that?
Do you mind sharing with them about the project that Rogers Wade is working on for?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Roger and Wade come out. We sent it to them on Facebook, so Mr. Stewart had me call them, and they, it's a plastic glass thing, sits at a round table where several kids had that, and the teacher's in the middle. You see the texture and the stuff, they sit each other. Well, anyway, I called them, they'd already been out to measure some stuff for us and use us, kind of like a guinea pig, and make some stuff up, and they're going to give it to us and try it for some campuses that we don't have safety glasses set up yet. So when I called them about Mr. Stewart's little idea, they made one. They're coming out tomorrow at 10 o'clock at Higgins to show us the protocol that they made so that we can look into getting several of those made in places we need. I think if we let them, we, at this point, the ones that I've looked at and the ones that Mr. Stewart showed me on Facebook and YouTube, I mean, it takes some time to make. They can produce these things really fast. So if you want to come out and see it, I'm sure Mr. Stewart would mind, Higgins at 10 o'clock tomorrow, and they're going to show us one. Of course, now, this is just a rough one. I mean, it looks nice, but they're going to have to cut it down to fit our round tables or horseshoe tables wherever you want to call them at each campus.
What area are we talking about using that in?
Like in the classrooms when they're working with small groups on a horseshoe table?
Okay, and then separating, being in front of the teacher, and the teacher?
Yes, and it's going to be used when social distancing is an issue, you know, so when they're sitting at the horseshoe table, obviously, there's not a lot of room to spread out, so it would provide protection between the student and the teacher.
I mean, we're limited on space, on spreading these kids out, so we've had to come up with some ideas, and Mr. Somebody that thinks, send her that on Facebook or something.
Is there anything, I mean, we might be coming up with this later, as far as face shields for teachers?
Yes, we're going to talk about it in a minute.
Okay, okay.
Well, as you know, in the past, we set up safety entrances at every campus but Bailey and Higgins and Parker. Well, since then, Parker's been done, so nobody can access the office, they have to come to the window, okay? Since then, Bailey, we finished Bailey today, they're coming to Higgins. In the same process, we were able to purchase some doors so that we could put up, you come into Higgins and start turning right and just walking down, they'll have to go through those other doors now to get to where the kids are at. Same thing at Bailey, okay? These are not brand-new doors, they were ordered for another project, they didn't get used, so we got them at a discount price. I don't know the total price yet, I know a rough estimate, but it's a safety thing. But the safety windows were, nobody's getting in the office anymore, Bailey's already been done, so is Parker, they should do Higgins tomorrow. So in other words, when a grand or somebody comes in the building, they got to go to the office first, there's no, you know, they got protection. There's a little speaker in the window, and then there's a hole to slide a paperwork through and that kind of thing. And the teachers, I mean, principals at their campus paid for those windows to be put in out of their money. I helped as much as I could with Mr. Stewart's approval on some of that stuff because I didn't have all the money to do it out of my butt, but those have been done. I'll give you an update on how they'll impact our sort of energy management company. Remember, we had coronavirus, so we did come back from spring break, so I don't want these numbers to, I don't want you to think these numbers are going to happen all the time. But once coronavirus happened and we didn't come back from spring break, our numbers jumped up from 6,000 a month to 12,000, and in one month it was 13, and this last month was 10,000. So we're beating our benchmark a lot, but that's due to the coronavirus. Now, I don't see that, that probably goes back to Mr. Earl, I don't know where that goes, but either, well, I know it does, it goes to pay, you know, the loan to put all this stuff in is what the savings is for. I hadn't given you an update in a while about that. At each campus, of course, we're waxing floors, painting rooms, we're painting the hallway at B Wing in stone, they haven't been painted in years. We got some handrails and some painting to do at the high school we didn't get to do last year, we're going to start next week. At Parker, of course, I told you about the window, we're doing the third grade pre-canteen. They're coming to put the tile in, and we had to paint some walls, that's going to happen at the end of this week. Of course, I told you about the safety, the head start building, the roof was put on last week. We're going to start the painting on the outside of the building, and we're going to do some cleaning on the inside and get ready to go to the autism unit into that head start. We have got safety equipment in, Mr. Stewart's going to go over some of that. We don't have all the information, I just went and picked it up from Regent Hake, the company of the federal government, she's going to tell you about that. But we did order some on our own through Home Depot Pro, and we've got, you know, face masks, shields coming, the clear shields. And we're going to have hand sanitizer at every entry, main entry for students, and we've got those ready to put up, we just haven't got with the principals yet. The first meeting, I forgot about with our new principal at the high school, and I apologize for that, and I'm going to reschedule for tomorrow, so all that's here, and Mr. Stewart's help, we, you know, we've got it all in place.
Can I ask one more question? On the sprayers, you're talking about the little sprayers?
Yes, ma'am.
Like in the high school, as spread out and as big as the different areas are, like the gyms, the band hall, the CTE and all that, how many sprayers will there be?
We got one for each building, but what we're going to do is rotate one that we use for athletics to the high school night for the night shift, because we run night shift, evening shift, I'm sorry, evening shift.
So these will be done, this will be done after hours, during hours, or?
Yes, ma'am. As soon as the kids leave, we'll disinfect them the next day. And the high school is spread out, but I've got a plan to use another one that we're not going to, that will be done by the time the bus routes are over, we'll run that to the high school, and there'll be two doing the high school. We have one doing that, the gyms, and one doing the classrooms. And we've got some stuff set up with Mrs. McGregor, too, on the cafeterias, so we have to do those areas also, but we've kind of set that up in the schedule. Of course, things have changed since then, so, but we'll work around all that, we'll get it done. Like I said, they're, I mean, $1,700 a piece, and maybe in future we can purchase some more. It's a real quick process. I know it seems like, if you watch the video, and you want to go to YouTube, it's on YouTube, it's a quick process, it's not something that's going to be real slow. Well, like the cafeteria area, this first bunch comes in, has lunch, you're going to hit it in between different groups, or is it just one? Yes, I don't know, we don't know our schedule or anything like that, but we're going to do wiping down.
Yeah, they're going to spray chemicals out of the bottle and wipe down between lunches.
We'll do the wiping down with this effect that we have in our mixing machines, but the disinfectant machine, the electronic machine we want, it's just every day after the kids leave. And I don't know the schedule on the high schools yet, I want to get with the principal. We have a meeting tomorrow at 11:00.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you, Rick. They will move to item five C, consideration and approval employee handbook. Mr. Watson?
That's about what was killing, about 11:00 today. We had to change some, last-minute changes on some dates, and so on the employee handbook, it's exactly what the board book sent out. I just went in and modified it, so I come, I emailed it. All it was was some dates on the appraisals of teachers because of the different start date, okay? So that was the only change as far as what was sent in the board book to that. The only change is basically the same as it was last year with the exception of a couple of changes, and I'm just going to talk about the changes at the same time. We changed, of course, the dates of the appraisals that we just recently changed, and then Rick wanted a dress code for his maintenance and custodian to be sure and dress the right, dress with the shirt that we provide them, and the type of clothing that was safe to work in the virus state that they work in. So we put just a small deal in there that addressed the custodian and maintenance dress code, and that's on page 51 of that, that you got in your board book. So that's only changing the employee handbook. Any questions on the employee handbook?
We'll go ahead and tackle this agenda item and then move to the other handbook, if that's okay.
Yes, we'd like to recommend that the board approve that employee handbook.
So we need a motion to approve the employee handbook, made by Bo, seconded by Joel. Is there any discussion or questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero. Now we'll move to item five D, consideration and approval student handbook.
Okay. Rick, I want to have you read that off because there was some changes, more than just dates, and I want you to have the accurate one in your hand. And like I said, we learned some stuff at 11, and we had to make some changes, and we already had an appointment with Mr. Lambert at 3 to visit with him about some stuff, so I want to have you read those copies off. But it's basically, again, just like the handbook last year with the exception of these changes. Of course, the first one is the student behavior when it comes to extracurricular clubs, organizations. It's the exact same thing that we talked about last board meeting. We discussed the possible changes that we're going to do, and everybody seemed to agree with that, so we put that little piece in, that student behavior, okay?
What page, what page was that beyond?
59.
59?
I'm going to look again.
And if you look just like the proposal that I gave you last, it's the exact same word.
I just looked at it, Sheila, a few minutes ago. It's not on 50, let's see.
You have it, she?
I think it's 63.
63.
63.
About the sponsors, the clubs and all that, yeah?
Okay. The other thing that we changed was just a little bit of wording in the dress code. Mr. Stewart talked to us about, you know, we've got some new things going on this year with the face mask, and then what's the deal is called this around your neck? Face guard?
Gators.
Anyhow, we were concerned about possible inappropriate writings or symbols on those, and so we just changed the wording so that it covered not only like shirts or caps, but it also covered, we just said any garment. So that means that anything that has inappropriate writing or symbols on it, then the principal can't dress it, okay? So just a slight change in the wording on the dress code. And then the only other thing that we did was we took out the semester exemption, and Kelly, do you want to tell them more on that, or?
One reason that we really discussed the semester exemption policy in detail, just coming from the middle school as the former principal there, we always had issues with parents who, not necessarily parents, but kids who really wanted to come to school because they wanted to be exempt from their exams, and sometimes those kids would come to school sick or running a fever. And the COVID-19 pandemic is, you know, is growing, the numbers are growing each day in Lamar County, and I did not want to have a semester exemption policy in place that our kids would possibly come to school when they weren't feeling well, because we've got to protect our teachers and our students from this pandemic as much as we can. So we removed the semester exemption policy for this school year.
And that may be something in the future, once this, we get over this era of pandemics, that we may go back and consider changing that. But this time, just for the safety of our students and the safety of our staff, we just felt that that was in the best interest for all of those people. But other than that, that is the only changes, other than that, is pretty much the same student handbook that you had last year.
Got a question for you?
Father's pandemic stuff, is the school, do they have the right to test the kids if they wanted to be tested if they're underage? I've had lots of parents call me, want to know about that. Is that legal? Can they just say, "I'm going to test you"?
Rick, since we had you here, is that something that you can answer?
Let me just, let me make sure I understand the question first. Rick Lambert, How Young Wood, Taylor, thank you for having me. When you say testing the students?
Well, you know, they're doing these COVID tests.
Right.
Is if a student, a teacher thinks they have it, and they say, "We're going to send you to the office to get tested," do you have the right to test them with that calling their parents?
So I think Mr. Stewart is going to discuss the return to school program more specifically, but the, but I don't believe the district is actually doing any direct screening.
Well, that's what I'm hearing.
The screening is going to occur, parents are expected to screen and inform the district of any symptoms prior to coming to school. Now then, if the teachers or if staff observe symptoms while they're at school, and I can't remember whether this is in your program or not, but there is, there is the right that if symptoms are observed by adults of children who are sick, just like any time.
Right.
I mean, whether you're, whether this is COVID or not. But if you observe a child that has a fever, they say they have fever, and they say they have symptoms, you send them to the nurse for further medical diagnosis.
But I don't think at this time, Paul, that we're actually going to do any COVID tests.
So we just send them home, that's what they do?
Send them home, right, and then, you know, they can't return as part of the plan of, you know, return them until all the symptoms are gone or, you know?
There is some owners, well, they can't test my kid unless I'm totally?
No, we're not, we're not going to do that.
I will say that on that, CDC has allowed some schools, if they go to the school, if the district decides they want to do that, that can be part, but that has to be a district decision, and that's not.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to be able to tell them something when that's all.
That's not our plan. Our plan is for them to see their pediatrician.
Yes. Thank you. Any other questions on the student handbook?
Is, I mean, I know from the high school, often things come up that maybe aren't in the handbook. Is there anything here that we think that our high school might need covered as far as the handbook goes? I mean, have they had input?
Well, like I said, it was just the exact same thing that we did last year.
Okay.
We just made a few changes.
And they haven't asked for any changes?
No.
Other than that?
Not at this time. And anytime that something does come up, we can always amend it.
Okay.
If something comes up and you see that there's going to be an issue, you can always amend it. It's a working document, we're just likely to get that now.
That's perfect.
Any other questions?
Okay, we'll need a motion approved.
I'll second.
Made by Joel, seconded by Sheila. Is there any other discussion or questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Mr. Watson. Five E, consideration and approval proposed revisions to EIC local. Dr. Chadwick?
The EIC local is about class rank calculation, and the only thing that we're asking to change is that we add to the exclusions of class rank all CTE non-core credit courses. So that's highlighted in red in your document there. We see that across the state, many other districts, but it's just like excluding, well, you see on the others, all the I R S journalism debate, that way these courses, classes can be taken, and if they're at a lower GPA, it won't hurt someone who has a higher GPA and takes it. So it's really fair to give more incentive for students to take high-quality workforce courses that we would like them to take without hurting their GPA. There's one other small change, and I just want to advise you of this, where the word pre-AP has been changed to advanced because College Board is adding to their curriculum pre-AP courses. And those courses are, they cost, I looked it up, they're $3,000 a piece to give permission to use pre-AP courses. We're not changing anything about the rigor of our courses, we're just changing it back to the term advanced because College Board has said now that's their copyrighted term for a course that they charge for, and if we use it, we would be liable for that misrepresentation of the course that we're teaching. And if we use it, we would be liable for that misrepresentation of the course that we're teaching. So, so basically what I'm asking for is your consideration and approval of including all CTE non-core credit courses excluded from class rank calculation.
I have a couple.
Questions about that?
I have a couple of questions. We'll start with the AP. Will the kids still be able to take the test to use it for college credit and everything? Does any of that change?
No, none of that has changed. These are just the pre-AP, which are the classes before the AP classes. So instead of calling them pre-AP, they'll be called advanced. Now, across the state of Texas and I guess nationally, they're supposed to be doing that. I did check around. I'm sure some people haven't jumped on this yet, but we wanted to be in compliance.
And the.
This does not address AP classes.
The next question, as far as the CTE non-core courses. I thought we talked about this two or three months ago. Is this just before we're finally getting it put in policy?
This is the final policy draft, and once y'all approve it, then I can send it to Casby, and it can be now in our online policy.
Okay. My, my question is, existing students, just say a junior or a senior that's competing for class rank, how does this, how is this gonna affect those students that are already two years into this, into the program and system?
Anything that we've changed starts with an incoming class.
Okay, so it will only, this will only start with incoming freshmen? Okay. Any other questions?
Do you want me to motion to approve?
We have a motion to approve by red, seconded by a bow. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move to item five F, consideration and approval, 2020, 21's school calendar revision.
This morning at 10 o'clock, the Lamar County Health officials met with all of the Lamar County superintendents via Zoom to discuss the school start date. The Lamar County officials have recommended us starting September 8th. So if you'll look at the calendar in front of you, it looks a little different than the calendar that we had spoke about earlier because we had to push our start date back to September 8th. And our last day will be June 16th for the kids with June 17th being a teacher workday.
So we're not starting in August at all?
No, the, the students will not start in August. New teachers will come back August 26th and 27th, and then the rest of the teachers will come back on August 28th. One thing, and we can go ahead and talk about it now, and we'll talk about it again here in a minute. September 8th, half of our student body will come back. September 9th, the second half of our student body will come. And September 10th, they will all come. And keep in mind, these are the kids whose parents select for them to have in-person learning. The reason that we are doing this, and once again, it'll get a little bit more detailed here in a moment. This is giving us time to provide the training that the state is requiring in regards to COVID-19. You know, discussing social distancing, washing your hands. They've given us a list, you know, of requirements that we have to follow. We're also gonna use those two days to check out Chromebooks, hotspots if needed. We're gonna be working with our teachers on helping our students with Google Classroom, CSO. You know, we had some students that were on packets back in the spring, and they'll need to learn how to work, you know, Google Classroom and Zoom and things of those nature. So we're gonna use those two days for training purposes. Now, if we have a student who is from a mixed home and we have the days split by initials. So if they're from a mixed home and they have different last names, of course, we're gonna work with those families and accommodate them on those two days for training. Do you have any questions regarding the calendar?
So we're not starting anything online, face-to-face?
We are starting.
The ten.
No, September 8th, we will start with in-person and online.
And that's because of the recommendation?
That is the recommendation of the Lamar County Health officials.
I just want to say that I'm in support of these changes. I've, it's, I'd called Ms. Stewart this morning to ask her what was the latest start date TEA would allow. And she says, you're not gonna believe this, but I just got off the call with the, the health officials. And, you know, I'm very concerned about the students' health and safety, the staff's health and safety, and concerned about virtual learning, being ready for us to, you know, the staff obviously haven't, they didn't get any of the, the final procedures till late in the game. And now, we're just now finding out everything. And, and, you know, the teachers need time to get everything ready to go that route. Probably a pretty good chance that all of them are gonna be doing that eventually. Anyway, so I mean, I'm, I'm very much in support of it. It, I, I know that, for example, I watched Dr. McCullough in Mount Vernon release their video earlier, staying there, starting August 6th. This gives us a month to see how bad of an outbreak those districts have in their student body. So I'm very much in favor of the changed calendar.
Have, have we gotten any information as far as UIL goes with the, the UIL?
I have not received anything from UIL.
So.
We're expecting it. We thought we would have it today.
Yeah. So these late start dates, because this is pretty late, you know, as far as UIL is concerned also. And the plan that you had put out at first was to start the 24th and 25th. And then, so just today, this came out. What about the other districts in our area? With this information coming out today, did they too?
We met, the Lamar County superintendents met after the 10 o'clock meeting with the health officials. We met. Of course, they haven't had the opportunity to have their board meetings and speak to their boards. So I don't want to speak on behalf of them. But I will tell you that three of the four superintendents are looking at September 8th and following the recommendation of the Lamar County Health officials.
So what does that do with the sports?
We don't have any guidance from UIL yet. Like I said, we thought we would have that today, but we didn't receive it. Or I hadn't before I came to this meeting. I can't answer, I mean, I can't give you a clear answer on that. I feel, I mean, Mr. Lambert, have you heard anything? I mean, I know that there's been a lot of hearsay, but I haven't had anything.
Yeah. The, the, again, I provide this answer to you because obviously boards are getting to the stage across the state where you've gotta make some decisions. And, and everybody across the state from a, from, from the state down to local governments have been, you know, working on trying to get some guidance from, from the folks that can't give authority to make decisions for some time. And it's just been slow to happen. So your, your administration is telling you the truth that these things are just now happening. And the guidance hasn't come any quicker. I've been listening to the TEA calls twice a week, you know, for, for two months now. So anyway, just as an opening. It is my, what I have heard is that it is expected that UIL is going to follow the guidance that comes out from TEA and the government. But they are separate, and so they haven't made their decision definitively yet. I don't expect that a later start date for, for schools is gonna impact students' abilities to participate in sports. So I don't think the decisions that you're making today are gonna impact students' ability to participate in sports. But as to whether or not UIL is going to cancel some sports or limit activity for certain sports, I don't know the answer to that yet. So that's the best I can give you at this stage. And answer questions for hand.
Best, good as it can get.
Okay.
Did, did the health department, I mean, pretty much felt like this was the positive thing to do as far as students go, not be in school for another month and a half? Did they consider?
I'll give you the information she gave us. I was saving this for the reentry plan, but we can go ahead and cover it. She said that on an average, we're having 12 to 20 cases reported a day in Lamar County. Keep in mind that local officials have the right to close schools down. And so the guidance that she gave us today was that once we hit the threshold of 8% that 8% is what they are currently looking at. The question that we had for her was, is that 8% per campus, 8% per district? And she just basically said we would, when our numbers get that high, we're gonna look at that. But more than likely, it will be per campus. So we didn't get a solid answer on that, but she did say that 8% is the threshold that they were currently looking at.
8% of what?
Oh, if you have 8%, test positive, I'm sorry, for COVID-19.
So they expect us to start having a lot with it?
Why would we not? You put 2,000 people in a building and expect them not to catch it?
That's what we have to go on. I just feel like we need to follow the recommendations of the local health officials.
And we have some districts in our area that are not?
Potentially.
There are, well, like I said, they haven't had the opportunity to talk to their board. This information was just shared with us today, and we have a board meeting tonight. So we were able to come back and correct our calendar and get it ready for tonight. There was one particular district that was looking at the possibility of starting online and staying with their normal calendar, but no, I mean, I can't speak on behalf of that school district. You know, that's, they're gonna have to make that decision whether they have that capability to do so or not.
Then was that considered for us?
We do not have that capability.
Was that considered for us to start online like with the original, what are?
We met with our administrative team. We, we do not feel like we have the capability to do that right now. You know, Ms. Chadwick has filled out the survey for TEA, and we're placing orders for hotspots and computers, but we don't have those in yet. So you don't want to start something if you can't.
Buy this a little bit more.
Right, if you can't, do it to the best of your ability.
I have another question.
We were told we can't go back to using packets. So, I mean, there's, that would be the only way we could start.
Okay.
And that guidance came from TEA, right?
Yes.
Um, with the start dates being September the 8th, how is that gonna affect our dual-credit students whose fall semester starts at PJC on August the 24th? I mean, that's just a question that my daughter had, and I didn't even think about it. She was like, Mom, what is that? How, how's that gonna affect me when I'm not even in school yet? But they're already, the classes are already going.
Yeah, Mom, I don't have to go ahead and start, but I will make sure I know that for sure. Good.
Okay, any other questions? We'll need a motion to approve the new calendar made by red. Seconded by a bow. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero. Moving on to five, item five G, consideration and approval appraisal calendar for the 2020, 2021 school year.
Okay, so you should have at your desk appraisal calendar for this coming school year. And then it's third version before y'all ever got it. And this just lists the critical dates. If you see that the box down below the calendar, it, it gives a quick summary of the important dates. And then we have, you know, some guidelines that are guidelines from the state that we all follow. And that's why everybody gets to see it as well as the calendar all at the same time. So try to, you know, put this together for us, and it looks fantastic, I think. Do you have any questions about the appraisal calendar or the guidelines as they stand beside the calendar?
I need that we accept this appraisal calendar?
Motion's made by Sheila, seconded by Alicia. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you. Okay, item five H, consideration and approval appraisers for the 2020, 21 school year.
And you should also have this list of certified appraisers. And we just need your approval to move forward.
Made by red, seconded by Sheila. Any further discussion? All in, all in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero. Okay. Five I, consideration and approval attestation for asynchronous plan.
Can I ask what that word actually means? There's two words there I had a problem with, and I figure Angela can define them for me.
I should roll the definition with me. But synchronous is in time, so synchronous is right now. Asynchronous would be if we put all this information in Google Classroom, and later on today, y'all looked it up and did the work, had the meeting at a separate time when we put it through. So asynchronous is the plan that we are looking at being the best option for our district, given that some students will come and some students will choose to stay home. And so asynchronous means we're going to be putting the majority of our content or instruction into Google Classroom, and students will receive it that way. Along with, within Google Classroom, they can post many activities. So it's not just worksheet-driven by any means. They can post their own videos, they can post YouTube videos and training. And then also just make general assignments or post worksheets or even tests that they can submit through, back through Google Classroom. So that's the training that for some of our teachers have and are very well-versed in and do a wonderful job, and some are at the very beginning stages. So we just get all of our teachers covered. So that's what asynchronous would be, is we submit our work. Now, for the early grades, we use CSO. It's a platform, CSO, and it's more video and picture-based. And it's also the way we communicate with parents at the upper grade levels. So that's at pre-K where we have our three-year-old class up through the second grade. A little bit of third, third's kind of mix between CSO and Google Classroom as soon as we get trained up. So there's a lot of information on this. I can walk through it with you, but you've had it. I hate to walk through something that you don't have any questions on, so. Would you like me to walk through this, or do you just ask if you have questions specific? Besides the definition of asynchronous. Well, the attestation just means that we are pledging to do all of this, and we need your commitment. And then we'll put the plan together to meet all of these requirements. We don't have the plan together yet. Model plans should come out from TEA this week. They sent out the synchronous plans last week, and the asynchronous model plans will come out next week. So it would be good for us to use those for the most specific guidance, but we have lots of ideas. Again, primarily Google Classroom, CSO, and some Zoom meetings for some synchronous amendments, but not, not 100%, or because it doesn't really work best for our district that way.
Does anyone have any other questions?
Do y'all have any specific questions about this?
We'll need a motion to approve the plan made by a bow.
I'll second.
Seconded by Sheila. Is there any other discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you very much. If you have any questions on this and any other, feel free to call.
Okay, item five J, discuss, consider the approval and adoption of a resolution authorizing the board of trustees of the North Lamar ISD to cancel the November 3rd, 2020 bond election to be held within said district. Considering everything that's going on with the virus and the impact on everyone and their jobs and business, we've requested this agenda, item, to be put on the agenda and for Mr. Lambert to be.
and for Mr. Lambert to be here to discuss our options. I'm just one board member, but I don't think the timing's right with everything that's going on, and I'm going to be in favor of canceling the bond election. There'd still be a board election at that time, because we put the board election off. So, Mr. Lambert?
Before he has a proposed resolution and an order for you to consider the election code, does it contemplate this specific situation in terms of there being a virus that is going through Texas like what we have? But it, but it does provide that when events are so uncertain, that the board feels that the, regardless of the outcome of the election, that you can't have an effective election, that you, that there is a provision for you to cancel the election, and then you can put it, consider it for a later time. To answer the question with regard to, well, why would you cancel this, but still have trustee election? Because of the unique nature of this being a bond election, you can, you have the provision to cancel that, but you're required by law to continue forward with the trustee election, and you've already postponed it once, and the law doesn't allow for you to cancel that. But it does give you the option, if you so find according to the resolution, to cancel the bond, bond election. And basically, the resolution just provided that if you do find that events are so uncertain and the future events over the next year or so are uncertain as to your population with regard to the timing of adding additional tax burden to the voters, then you can make the decision to cancel the election. Any questions about the terms of the resolution, or did I answer everything? Now, obviously, you don't have to find it. This is not a situation like we had in May where districts were being directed to cancel elections, because there's obviously going to be a presidential election in October. So, it's not like, the same factors don't come into play as in May in terms of holding an election. So, the bottom line is, if you choose to, you can cancel it. If you want to move forward, you can, you can move forward at your discretion with regard to bond election, and if you were to do that, then we would prepare a specific election order for you to adopt at your next meeting.
Do we need a motion for that?
Yeah, we'll need a motion to.
I need that we cancel the, I'm sorry?
We'll need a motion to approve the resolution, right?
The resolution and order is presented.
To adopt the resolution authorizing the cancellation of the November 3rd bond election.
Seconded by Boe. So, we have a motion made by Sheila, seconded by Boe. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah. I just, I just like to comment on what you said. I don't think it's fair to taxpayers right now. They're under enough stress. They don't know where the, a lot of them don't know where the next check's coming from or anything else. We desperately need these, this bond to pass here, but I just think it's bad timing. If y'all stick with us, we'll stick with you folks out there.
Anything else? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Mr. Lambert. Item 6, Superintendent's Report.
If you would, please get the reentry plan out. We're going to go over it. Okay, so, in response to the COVID-19 pandemic, our district leadership team has spent many hours going over the reentry plan. It was designed using the latest guidance that TEA has provided to us, along with some state and local officials. We also had surveyed our parents and our staff members, and we went through and looked at the feedback that the parents and the teachers and staff members provided to help us with this plan. The plan is lengthy, it's 26 pages long. You know, we're anxious to reopen our campuses as soon as we can, but we realize that we need to go at a slower pace in order to make sure that we're doing everything we can to protect our staff and our students. If you would, look on page four. This is a timeline. As you can see, we started July 14th, asking our parents to choose before at-home learning or in-person learning. The main reason that we were asking for that information is so that we could get an idea of how many hotspots and how many devices that we needed to purchase in order to be able to accommodate the kids who wanted to learn at home. You have, the parents have until August 24th to make any changes that they might want to make in the decision process, because we are going to release the reentry plan to our staff tonight, and then we're going to place the reentry plan on the North Mar webpage so that the parents can go online and read the reentry plan. And if they, once they've read the reentry plan, if they want to go back and make a change and maybe put their child on remote or switch to in-person, they have the right to do so up until August 24th. We will have some back-to-school events planning that will take place between August 26th and September 4th. And then, as I mentioned earlier, September 8th and September 9th will be used for orientation days to review and practice the district's health and safety protocols with small groups. So, we're going to start out on September 8th with families whose last names begin with A through L, and then on September 9th with families that start with M through Z. But please keep in mind, like I said earlier, if we have any families that are in the same household that have students with different last names, our principals will work with families to accommodate them. On September 10th, all students who select in-person learning will report to campus. Our remote learning will start on September 8th. And for those kids who choose remote learning, we're working on some videos to put online to take care of the training for the health and safety protocols. Since they won't receive that instruction in class, we're going to put together some videos so that they can watch that and receive the same information that the kids would receive that were in class. Does anybody have any question about the timeline?
What are you going to do about the kids that just show up? Nothing?
Well, if they, we're going to have to have.
A lot of these kids, you only have 428 people responding to.
Right.
So.
Well, we're going to be reaching out to parents. If they didn't fill out the survey, then we're going to call and ask for permission. Are they coming?
Well, I talked to someone, they said they're not doing it. I don't know, you know, some of them are that way, if they said they wouldn't respond to the survey. But I'm just asking if the kids.
Well, we have asked our administrators, we did this survey together as a team, our administrative team put the survey together. So, for any student on their campus who didn't fill out the survey, they're going to be making a personal phone call to find out whether or not they're going to be in-person or removed. You know, whatever the parent chooses, I mean, we'll respect that. We want our, we want our families to feel safe.
Are you also asking, what if they put at-home learning, and then they show up for school one day? Are you going to turn those kids away?
No, no, if they change their mind and they decide to come, that's fine.
They're not going to have to change wait till the six weeks?
So, we'll get into, we'll get into that.
I think that's what you were asking.
Well, no, I was asking, because some of our parents are not doing the survey. I mean, I talked to a couple of them, and I said, we need to fill out the survey. I said, well, I'm going on the survey. And so, I'm just saying, so if kids show up, they're still fine.
The survey is really to help us gauge, you know, what is the percentage of students that we're going to have here? It helps us with our planning process, and it also helps us figure out how many hotspots. You know, some students have internet access at home, and they also have a laptop at home, which is great, but we need to be able to help those students who do not have a laptop or a hotspot, and that helps us be able to plan. Because right now, of course, a lot of things are backordered, so we're trying to get our order in as quickly as we can so that we're prepared on day one. Okay. All right, if you wills, flip over to page five. Okay. I just want to go over the infection control measures with you real quick. Obviously, the governor has an order in place right now for face coverings, and we will abide by the governor's order. If the governor's order ceases, students and staff will be highly encouraged to wear face coverings when they cannot maintain social distance as well as in hallways, in common areas, and during arrival and dismissal. Face coverings include cloth masks, gaiters, face shields, or anything else that provides covering over the mouth and nose. You know, the face covering seems to be a hot topic right now in the media and across the state, but as long as the governor's order is in place, we will follow through and abide by his order. I think it's important for parents to know that as far as the social distancing goes, and I want to be very upfront and honest with everyone on this, that we will do our very best to social distance our children. However, that's not going to be possible in all areas of the building. You know, we may not be able to spread our desk six feet out if we're in a smaller classroom that doesn't allow for that, but we will move our desk out as far as we possibly can to try to provide that protection for the kids and for the staff. So, that is in here. There's a short little paragraph about it to help parents understand that. The water fountains are going to be used for filling water bottles only. We're going to ask that the students not drink out of them. Our students are going to be encouraged to provide their own protective gear, but if they do not have the means for a mask, of course, we will have masks in the office, and we will provide the students with a mask. Hand sanitizer will be available throughout the day. As Mr. Landis stated earlier, we have purchased the automatic hand sanitizer machines to keep the kids from having to actually touch the bottle to pump the hand sanitizer, so those will be spread out throughout the campus. However, we will have smaller bottles in the classrooms for the kids to use. The staff will be expected to regularly wash and sanitize their hands as well, and we are going to provide our students with instruction over these safety protocols.
And just to clarify, are the face masks for 10 and above?
Yes. Yes, it's the exact same order that he has in place that sprays just 10 and above. Okay, does anyone have any questions over that particular section? Okay, I'm sorry, I know this is lengthy, but I wanted to cover the most important sections of the book. If you'll turn to page seven, we're going to look at the breakfast and lunch. We have met with Diana Madrager, who is our Food Services Director, and gone over this with her to make sure that this protocol is something that her team feels safe doing. So, the cafeteria staff will wear face coverings and gloves, and will follow all health and safety protocols. Students will be encouraged not to share food or drink. Meals will be disposable packaging, and condiments and pre-wrapped silverware will be included with all the meals. Grab-and-go meals for breakfast may be utilized to lower the numbers in the cafeteria. The lunch tables will be spread out across the cafeteria to maximize space between groups. They are going to have drop boxes for cash and check payments, and the cashiers are going to type in the kid's ID number. In the past, the kids have been responsible for typing in the number, so to keep the keypad from being, having germs all over it, the cashiers are going to take care of that. All the tables will be sanitized between lunches, and meals will be available for remote learners for pickup only. So, if we have students that are at home and their parents want to come to town to pick up their lunch, those lunches will be available. And we are highly discouraging parents from dropping off lunch or snacks for the students during that time. Does anyone have any questions regarding the cafeteria? The cafeteria is probably going to be the most challenging for our staff. It's going to look different on every campus, of course. I know I've visited with the middle school principal, and she was discussing not only utilizing her cafeteria, but possibly utilizing her gym or her, utilizing the gym or the A-Gym foyer for tables. So, this is something that we are going to put, give the staff the reentry plan, and then they're going to have to tailor it to fit their campus needs. So, what you see on one campus may look a little different on another campus.
I know some of the larger districts that I kind of know some people in, they're going total grab-and-go. So, I don't know if that's an option or not, but that's just kind of what they're going to do, is totally grab-and-go lunch, breakfast, everything.
Okay, transportation is on page eight. Parents will be encouraged to transport their children to school daily as it is the safest means of transportation due to COVID-19. Students will be assigned seats, and a seating chart will be maintained by the bus driver. I spoke with Mr. Hilders regarding this. Our bus drivers already keep a seating chart, but we're going to keep that in place to try to keep the children that ride the bus, they're in the same household, sitting close, you know, close together. All buses will have hand sanitizer placed in the stairwells. The students will be asked to use the hand sanitizer as they enter the bus and as they exit the bus. As Mr. Landis mentioned earlier, we're going to use the backpack sprayers to sanitize our buses daily, and we are going to ask that, weather permitting, you know, if it's raining, we won't do this, of course, but if it's not raining, we're going to ask that the bus drivers crack the windows to help the additional ventilation through the bus while the children are on the bus. Any questions regarding transportation?
So, who's going to sanitize that bus? Maintenance or the bus driver?
When I talked to Mr. Hilders the other day, of course, that's going to be a decision that he'll make for his department, but he was discussing, they have their own, so it may be him or Jake that goes on to sanitize their bus.
He's not a hard time bus driver, just wanted to ask him a question.
Okay. If you would, let's look at page nine, because this seems to be one of the questions that I get asked the most. Okay, so, these guidelines were provided by the state, and when I say that, I mean the Texas Education Agency. So, the isolation procedures related to COVID-19. If a student or staff member has displayed symptoms of COVID-19, the school nurse will provide a clinical assessment to determine if and when a student or staff member needs to be sent home. If a student or staff member is assessed and exhibits COVID-19 symptoms during the school day, the cohort will be located to an alternate area while the room is being disinfected. Any individuals who themselves either are lab-confirmed to have COVID-19 or experienced the symptoms of COVID-19 must stay at home throughout the infection period and cannot return to campus until the school system screens the individual to determine any of the below conditions for campus reentry, below conditions for campus reentry have been met. So, the three criteria are as follows. At least three days, which is 72 hours, have passed since recovery. That means resolution of fever without the use of fever-reducing medications, or the individual has improvement in symptoms, or at least 10 days have passed since symptoms first appeared. In the case of an individual who has symptoms that could be COVID-19 and who is not evaluated by a medical professional or tested for COVID-19, such individual is assumed to have COVID-19, and the individual may not return to the campus until the individual has completed the same three steps set of criteria listed above. If the individual has symptoms that could be COVID-19 and wants to return to school before completing the above stay-at-home period, the individual must either A, obtain a medical professional note clearing the individual for return to school, or B, receive two separate confirmations at least 24 hours apart that they are free of COVID via acute infection test at an approved COVID-19 testing location. Students or staff who come into close contact, that means within six feet for 15 or more minutes with a lab-confirmed case of COVID-19, will be asked to self-quarantine for 14 days and should contact the school for meeting the return-to-school criteria. Now, I want to stop right here and just clarify this. So, if we are sending a student home, and we are asking them as a district to self-quarantine for 14 days, that student will immediately go to remote learning. So, that's why we're wanting to use those first two days to train our kids so that they know how to work the computer, the hotspot, and Google Classroom or Seesaw, whatever grade level it may be, because we know without a doubt that we will have kids going back and forth between in-person and remote learning. Some of the clinic procedures that are related, if the COVID-19 symptoms are present, the staff member will be sent home, and if it's a student, they'll be isolated from the other students until a parent can come and pick them up. And the nurse will notify campus administrators to move the student's class so that the space can be disinfected. I know another question that I've been asked a lot about, and I'm glad that Mr. Lambert is here tonight, because he spent the afternoon training our HR department. We've had a lot of questions regarding. We've had a lot of questions regarding the family medical leave and emergency paid sick leave. So, Mr. Lambert, would you mind in a nutshell, just kind of providing a summary for the board of how that is going to work with teachers if they are in that situation?
So, the, the key is it's, it's a good thing that the district is providing a remote option because without a doubt, most districts are going to see some conditions when, when employees are going to have leave related to COVID. Either, either there's a quarantine order that they must comply with, or they got a person they're caring for that is infected, or their child, son or daughter, has a daycare in our school that is closed. And for all of those reasons, you can have leave according to federal law. And so, one way to avoid the necessity of having to isolate and keep a teacher, for example, from participating in, in their work process because of these isolation orders would be to be able to have them work remotely. And so, obviously, where possible, the district, I understand, is, is going to, you know, have that employee continue to, to work, put on work at the, at the campus. Because if, if they are unable to telework, then basically the federal law provides for a, a period of paid sick leave for them under the conditions of the isolation order where they themselves are sick or they're caring for another individual, not their son and daughter. That's a, basically a two-week, 80-hour paid leave. If their, if their son or daughter has childcare or schools that are closed, that could be up to an additional 10 weeks after that. And so, that's essentially the, the, the two-week period is in addition to any leave that they already have under state and local days or under federal law for other reasons. And then all of this interplays with, with other laws, such as the Americans with Disabilities Act and, and other employment laws that, that you have to keep in mind as well. But that's a, a real big-picture view of, of available leave for, for the employees. There are some caps on, on how much can be paid. And, and for those that are caring for their individuals or they're caring for another, the pay is at two-thirds the rate, and there's a cap on the maximum amount as well. But, but I'm not going to cover each scenario. Do you have any general questions about that?
Okay, on pages 13 and 14, just because everything that I just read to you is extremely lengthy and wordy. We created an employee workplace process map and a student process map for our employees to have to follow if they're exposed or if they test positive, what they will do next. And we also have created it for the parents to have a copy of what will happen if a student is exposed. On page 15, you will see in the reentry plan, multiple times, it refers to the multi-stage approach for managing COVID-19. And this is a chart that we put together for different stages. Originally, we had talked about putting percentages here, and I'm glad that we decided not to because Commissioner Muraf recently came out and said that either this week or next week, the state would be providing us more information regarding the stage approach and when you might move from one stage to the next. So, the main thing that I need to understand is this is a very fluid document. It's going to have changes taking place possibly daily or weekly. I know it's very frustrating. It's, it's been frustrating for all of us because right when we think that we're finally have received the guidance and we're not going to have any more changes, an hour later, everything changes. So, I just, that's why we're not voting on this document because changes are going to be made quite frequently. On page 16 and 17, it addresses the instructional delivery models. As I mentioned earlier, we will offer in-person learning, and we will also offer the at-home, online learning. And so, it kind of gives you the details here below each one. Keep in mind on these instructional delivery models, Ms. Chadwick, along with the instructional coaches and the principals and the teachers who volunteered on the survey, will be getting together and working on this, on this plan. The asynchronous model plan actually has to be submitted to the state the first week of October. And so, they will be working on those plans, and we will be more than happy to provide updates to you regarding that as soon as we can. At the end of the handout, you will see an FAQ. And pretty much what we've tried to do here is as questions roll in and people are asking questions, we're trying to answer them. And we put it on the document, and we're going to be adding to this document as questions come in. So, this just, you know, if a parent logs on and they read this or an employee and they have a question, they might find their question within the FAQ, and that would help provide them some extra guidance. I think the main thing that I need everybody to understand is, you know, we as a district understand that our families have concerns about returning to school while COVID-19 exists. And we're going to support our parents in whatever decision they choose when it comes to the delivery model and what works best for their family. The reentry plan will go out tonight because I would like to give our staff the opportunity to read the reentry plan before it goes online because I know that as soon as they read it, they're going to have parents reaching out to them, asking questions. And I just feel like they deserve to have the, the right to read the reentry plan before it goes live. I know that's a lot of information that I've thrown out at you. Does anybody have any questions? And if you don't, and you think of one later, please feel free to contact us. Okay. Next on the agenda is the TASCAS ASB convention. What I would like is if you, and I have no guidance on this whether or not it will be face-to-face or remote. But if you would, just shoot me an email if you're interested in attending. And as soon as I get more information for you, I'll be happy to share that with you. I just wanted you to have the dates for your calendar.
Okay, we'll move to item seven, executive session. The board will conduct a closed meeting in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, Subchapters D and E, Texas Government Code, Section 551.1074, Personnel Matters.